And we want to welcome you to the Longview City Council meeting on March 13th, 2014. Today, we're glad to have the prayer to be led by Israel Adams of Pine Tree High School. And in the pledge of allegiance will be led by Jared Dixon of Longview High School. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Lord, our God, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for another opportunity to be here to discuss the situations in our community. Lord, we know that without you, everything that we do and every action that we take, it would be void of life. We know, God, that without you, we would be, we would have no meaning. Lord, every action and every situation, God, today, Lord God, let your influence be in it, Lord. Not our will, but yours will be done. Lord, the task that is set before us today, let us achieve it and let us go above, beyond what we thought we would. Not what we want to do, Lord God, but let us go to your level. We ask for guidance and support today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. That's two nice-looking young men. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank y'all. Looking good. Thanks. Good afternoon, Mr. Allen. Glad you could make it. Glad you could make it. Timing is everything. All right, we're going to start today's meeting with our citizen comment. I've got a couple of cards. See, we've got Mr. Vic Verma back tonight. Where you at, Vic? There you are. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. I'm here tonight. I'm here on behalf of Organizing for Action and Special Health Resources of Texas and the NAACP Longview Chapter. As we all know, the March 31st is the end of the open enrollment period for the Affordable Care Act. So, we're urging folks to get enrolled if they haven't already done so. I myself have gotten enrolled, have a very nice goal plan that is very much suiting my needs and very much makes me happy. So, I'm encouraging, we're encouraging everybody to do that. I'm also on the Board of Special Health Resources of Texas. We have a navigator grant for 14 East Texas counties, the counties represented by the East Texas Council of Governments. Our navigators are hard at work getting people enrolled, and we encourage people who need assistance to contact one of our navigators. You can contact our phone number at 903-247-1078. You can go by the Community Connections Building. That's where our office is. Just stop by. You can make, it's probably better if you make an appointment, but if you stop by, they'll be able to help you as well. So, we are encouraging people to get enrolled. There are four ways. You can do it with our navigators. You can do it online at healthcare.gov. You can do it by phone or mail. But the best ways to do it are with a navigator or online. So, we also are still doing information sessions. We've spoken to many churches and community groups to make sure that people are getting the truth and the word about what's in the Affordable Care Act and how it can help them. So, that's what we're doing with Special Health. And one of those places that we will be is this weekend at the NAACP and Special Health Resources Health Fair. NAACP Longview Chapter and Special Health Resources of Texas are pleased to be cosponsoring a health fair at Bethel Baptist Church at 323 Court Street from 9:00 a.m. in the morning to 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. Special Health will be there to enroll people and give out information. I myself will be giving a presentation, and we will have many other health services. We'll have the mobile unit and other organizations trying to make sure we have a healthier community. So, we encourage the community to turn out for that. So, again, we just hope that people get enrolled. It's good for families, it's good for individuals, it's good for our community. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Verma. I thought you were going to tell me you were going to be there yourself, cooking hamburgers, hot dogs, and all that stuff. Aw, come on, man.
This is our chair for the event, so.
Mr. Crane? All right, man. Thank you. Good info. All right, Victoria Wilson.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. How are you? I'm glad to be here. I think I put in front of you all and appreciate all that you do, a celebrate authors. This is on behalf of the library. I was asked to help make this event happen, and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with city staff, our librarians. This is, we're calling it Celebrate Authors: Telling Your Story. It's from April the 3rd through the 5th, and we are having nationally acclaimed authors in here. This is a really exciting time for Longview. Yehuda Mercado, and he has done some work with Disney, written some books, Pantalones, Texas, and does illustrations. And so, he's going to be doing some things with the kids. Kathy Lucetti is a friend of mine that I grew up with in Midland, Texas. We're honored to have her. She wrote the books Medicine Women of the West, Children of the West, Ministers of the West, and the book I Do. And the Medicine Women of the West book was what they took Dr. Quinn, Medicine Woman, after. So, we're thrilled to have her to be here. And she is celebrating her new book called Skidoo, The Smartest Dog in the World. And the news will be sort of given out in Longview that Sony's just brought the rights and the screenplay for that. So, we'll get to celebrate that with her. There are going to be a number of authors here, lots of events, tents, and I put a schedule of events for you right here. So, they'll, Dr. Peggy Coglin will be the honorary chairman. We certainly hope that you all will be able to make it and at least be there for that opening on that Thursday evening for the meet and greet for the authors. So, I just wanted to get this out into the public because, as you all know, I'm a big supporter of our library, and we have a wonderful staff there, and they've been very creative in wanting to pull this together and make this a happening event for Longview. And there are a number of ways. I didn't know what this is, but I was informed by city staff that this is a QR code. QR code. They even loaded it on my phone for me. I was appreciative. So, this is a way people can snap on this. Look, Richard knows what it is, right? Thank you. Isn't it great? I know, hanging on to the, yeah. And anyway, you can snap it and get reservations, and the seating is limited. But the great thing about it is it's on the Facebook site. There's a telephone number for those of us that still like to have a personal voice at the end of the line. And we, this is the first event. We hope to make it an annual. We're already having authors from other areas inquire about next year. And the great thing is we have people already coming in from, I know friends of Kathy's amount are coming in from out of state, they're coming in from out of the city. So, people are going to be, you know, using hotel rooms, restaurants are going to be filled up. It's going to be a really great addition to the city on a lot of levels. So, thank you for your time and welcome to all of.
Thank you for being here. Okay. Okay. That's all the speaker cards I have except for P and Z items. So, we'll move to consent agenda. Councils, any item on consent agenda you'd like to hear separately?
I just got a question on item B, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Smith has a question. Item D. Item D, and let's see who's, that would be Ms. Angela Cohen.
Hi, Angela. How you doing? Angela, who is the prouder city investment policy person? Who is the prouder person for our investment policy?
Who is the current person?
The prouder person for, well, current person. It helps out.
That would be me.
That'll be you. Okay. All right. That's what I, I just didn't ever know, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then we also have a, an auditor. Okay?
He's not in one of the investment.
Okay, as far as, okay.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Any other questions or items for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion or consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Next item will be our zoning and public hearing items. Item A would be to hear a public hearing to consider application HL14-01. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Willard. The, this application is to request a local historic landmark designation for the TMP Mopac Train Depot located at 905 Pacific Avenue. As you may be aware, this is a project that the city is in the process of renovating. We're going to unveil the, in May at Train Day. Also, city staff submitted to the state for a registered Texas Historic Landmark, an RTHL designation, which was approved. They're in the process of going through that, a very lengthy process. And with that, we wanted to designate it as a local landmark also. This is our first local landmark application. And, you know, as you know, rail has been a very important part of Longview's history, part of our establishment, and so, you know, this location is near and dear to a lot of our hearts. You know, as the criteria for designation, being a recorded Texas Historic Landmark is one of those, but also due to its historical, economic, architectural, and cultural significance, it meets those standards also. So, the Historic Preservation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and staff do recommend approval of the first designation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? If not, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open, and I do have one speaker card from Gerald Bate. We're here to answer questions, so did you want to speak to this item, Mr. Bate? Pardon me? Please come forward. Gerald. Bats. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Bratz. I'm currently serving as Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, along with Commission members Van Craddock, Pam Johnson, Lori Kiball, and the city liaison, John Sims. Our mission statement charges the commission to protect, enhance, perpetuate historic landmarks in districts of importance as a mechanism to advance the economic, cultural, educational, and general welfare of the city of Longview. The commission has initially identified a list of local historic landmarks owned by governmental entities, institutions, organizations, churches, and private owners that are eligible for historic designation, along with possible state and national recognition. Two of the commission's four goals that apply to the Longview Train Depot's historic landmark designation are to increase public interest and civic pride in Longview's history, as well as to protect the landmarks and districts of Longview's historic architectural and cultural heritage. Therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends the city council to approve the circa 1939 Texas and Pacific, Reserve Pacific Passenger Station as the first of the city's historic designated landmarks. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for being here. I do not have any other speaker cards. Anyone here would like to speak to this item as well? If not, public hearing is closed. Council may have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll go to item B, public hearing to consider application Z1402.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. This is a request to rezone from multifamily MF3 to single-family SF5 for lots located, lots 15 through 18, Block 7 of the Marshall Heights subdivision located on the northeast corner of North 3rd Street and Abbot Street. As you can tell from the zoning map, these lots are currently zoned multifamily. They are requesting to rezone, downzone this so that they can build single-family houses. They could build it under the current zoning, but by downzoning it, it protects that investment. This is a part of the redevelopment of this area. It is consistent with the zoning across the street. It is in a future land use area for low-intensity business, but we don't see this area redeveloping outside of the residential. So, it is still consistent with the land use that's occurring there. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, as well as staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Shirley? If not, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do have a speaker card for Mike Austin. Mike? Okay. All right. Any questions of Mr. Austin? Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, public hearing to hear application Z1403.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. This request is to rezone from agriculture to single-family 4 for approximately half acre in the William Robinson survey, tract 2, located on the south side of Darnie, which is west of Stanuland Street. Here's a survey of that property. There's an existing kind of six-by-metal garage on that property. As you may know, when we bring property into the city, when we annex it, we give it a zoning designation of agriculture until more permanent zoning can be established. That's why most of this area surrounding is zoned ag. There are some areas that are zoned single-family. As we go to develop property, we assign it a zoning category that is appropriate for the land use. This area is designated as a low-density residential, and single-family 4 is very consistent with that. Looking at the aerial map, there are a few houses located on the north side of Darnie. It is a dead-end street. What's generating the rezone request for this property? The gentleman purchased it, I believe, with a meets-and-bounds description, not subject to a compliant subdivision plat, so it was illegally subdivided. It was owned by a gentleman that owned the majority of this property in the past, and so, they're just trying to rezone it so that they can utilize this property to potentially build a single-family home or subdivide it in the future and build additional single-family homes. I know at the P and Z meeting, several of the adjacent property owners had concerns with the, with the street. It's a private street, privately maintained, does have some issues with it. There's issues with, you know, water and fire protection there, and all of those items will have to be addressed. The zoning is just the first step in the process. It does, would allow them to build just a single-family home, but they will still have to address fire protection and all of those access issues. You know, we'll have to see what the fire marshal's going to ask for, as far as, you know, the surface, turnarounds, fire protection with fire hydrants. I know there is a 2-inch water line out there. I don't know if it's going to be sufficient for an additional water tap or not, but all those items will have to be addressed during the development process.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Shirley? Okay, Mr. Allen?
Michael, thank you. On the street, since it's a private street, do they have plans to dedicate it to the city, or do you know?
No, because they only have the right to cross it. They don't actually own it. You know, as far as the ownership of it, I don't know that just one person actually owns it, but it is privately maintained.
All right. What would we do if this is approved, as far as, you mentioned a fire service in order to, would the road have to be resurfaced, or would there be any requirements on that as far as the fire department's concerned?
Potentially. I can't answer for the fire marshal. You know, their, the fire code does have several requirements when it comes to new construction, and they would have to address that and satisfy our codes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Frost.
With respect to the fire, the fire hydrants and the size of the pipes, would the person have to put in a fire hydrant in accordance with the subdivision orders?
Yes, with a, well, if they just build a single one, it would be per the fire code because they wouldn't be subdividing. But it, you know, that is one way to address it. I'm not the fire marshal, so I don't want to speak on his behalf, but generally, fire hydrants are required within 600 feet. There are other alternatives in some situations, but they will have to address fire protection satisfactorily.
Include sprinkler system.
Potentially. There's lots of, yeah.
I mean, the entire thing, because what it boils down to is pressure and flow.
Pressure and flow.
So.
I mean, they will have to address it.
Right.
They have to be addressed.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Williams?
Councilman Allen asked a question about, are they dedicating this to the city? And I think the answer was no.
No.
So, in regard to fire, water, and the services we provide, if we're allowing for this rezoning, are we potentially assuming some form of financial responsibility? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
No.
This is just.
It will still rest with them as the private street owners?
Correct. We're not assuming any responsibility on the street. The property owners have the current right to cross it and use it as a private access easement. This is strictly just zoning it for the use of his property. It's not rezoning anybody else's property either. And now, if he, you know, chooses to build, and then we have to, you know, dedicate water lines, sewer lines, fire protection, they'll have to, if we don't have easements, and I think we may have some easements out there because there are some water and sewer lines out there, but he may have to obtain other easements in order to satisfy that.
And in obtaining those easements, he will have to incur that cost.
Correct. This is part of the development.
Our job is just to make sure the procedure is followed.
Correct.
And this, and one last thing. Are you referencing one home, or are we talking about a potential development?
Potential development, with it being half acre in the single-family 4 zoning. And I don't remember the width of the property. Let me go back. I'm sorry. You know, there's a potential for maybe three with the single-family 4 zoning. There are minimum width, minimum depth, and minimum square footage requirements. So, looking at it, I would think three tops. I don't, you know, and I'll let the gentleman address what his, you know, what his intentions are.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Quick, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Shirley, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the parcels in that area, set up for one-acre lots, or the developer just taking a half acre and, you know, subdividing it into a quarter of an acre each?
Yes. Under the, under the current ag zoning, it does require a minimum one acre to legally subdivide, and that's kind of the issue. It was illegally subdivided. We're trying to rezone it to make it legal. Currently, it's non-conforming. And, you know, as we see development, generally, we rezone to allow a little more density, less than the one acre.
What about the other property in that area? An old one-acre lot?
I don't believe so. The one across the street is .38. The other ones appear to be half acre, you know, maybe a little bit larger about. I believe most of them are non-conforming, but they're existing. They have existing homes on them. I believe they were like that when we annexed them, so they're existing non-conforming or essentially grandfathered.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley.
So, we annexing somebody illegally, causing them properties?
Platted is a .50.
No, it's not currently platted. In order for them to build on it, they will have to legally plat it, either as the one lot or as more than one lot, whatever they choose. But currently, it's an illegal, illegally subdivided parcel. And rezoning is the first step to plat it legally.
Do you know where the closest city water line, feeder line would be?
There is a water line on Darnie. It's a, I believe it's a 2-inch.
Oh, it's small.
I believe there's maybe a 6-inch on Stanuland, if not on Tinreville.
Okay.
But they, you know, they'll have to, they'll have to address that when they, you know, and this is the first step.
Okay. Anything else? All right. This item calls for a public hearing, and I have a card from Rodney Riley. Did you want to speak, Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Come on.
Thank you. I'm only here because I bought the property illegally subdivided. I didn't have.
You bought it illegally?
I bought it, and I bought it, and it was illegally subdivided. And upon purchase of it, I didn't know that. And I bought it for a storage building because there is a 20 by 60 building on there, and I was just going to store materials in there. Well, I found out from Michael, I'm not supposed to have that, I'm not supposed to be using it. So, this is the first step I'm trying to take so I can be legal in what I do there, whether I tear the building down and build one house or three. My intention is just to, just to get the process started, to see if I can do anything with it at all.
Well, it's in an area that could sure use some.
Yes, sir.
You know, some grade. Any questions of Mr. Riley? Yeah, go ahead.
I know Coach Riley, he builds good quality homes. That'd be a nice addition to that area if he were to, in fact, develop it. So, I think it'd be a good thing for the city and for that area, Rodney.
I agree 100%. He's done a great job, I think. I've just given you a hard time.
That's okay.
I think he coached my daughters. I gotta give him a hard time.
A little bit.
You didn't, you didn't coach cheerleaders, did you?
I mean, now I didn't, but you're.
Lucky you.
Coaching because of my son, I thought.
Okay. Any, I don't have any other speaker cards. Anybody else like to speak to this item? If not, public hearing is closed. Council can have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Action items. Item A, consider resolution to publish and post the draft fiscal year 2014 annual housing plan. We have Mr. Martell Armstrong, who I want to personally thank for taking my place today since I was unable to attend the leadership Longview meeting today. I know you did a wonderful job.
I did the best I could.
On such short notice.
So. Mayor Dean, Mr. Willard, ladies and gentlemen of council, these are our annual routine activities that are required from us by HUD. You read the caption. We are just posting and publishing our annual plan, five-year plan, and changes to our budgets for community development block grant and home funds.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Armstrong? Okay. If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And then we have item B, is to consider resolution to publish and post the draft of the amended consolidated action plan and home budget for the city of Longview. Mr. Armstrong?
Again, these are routine annual activities that are required by HUD. So, we're asking to publish and post the draft because, I don't have to read it after you read it, but.
Okay. Okay. Yes, the procedural. Okay. Questions, comments on this item? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Martell, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C, consider an ordinance approving the city manager's recommendations regarding the appointments as posted. There he is. Mr. Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Since I've been the city manager, which in June will be nearly, will be seven years. So, since that time, we've been operating the executive team staff for the city of Longview according to this organizational chart that you'll see before you tonight. And that's included, of course, in assistant city manager position. We have two public safety chiefs, fire chief and police chief, director of finance, public works director, also development services director, community services director, and human resources directorship. And as I say, we've been operating like this for the whole time that I have been here. As you know, the assistant city manager position and the human resources director position became vacant. And so, about last fall, I began the process to look for candidates to fill these positions. And we even contracted with a search firm that specializes in recruiting municipal employees and went through the process, first with the HR director position, and then we would continue on after that with the city manager search after that. We did go through the process and went out and got recruitment for a human resources director. We had quite a few candidates that responded to that, and even went so far as to bring in two people for an interview. We had an interview panel that helped me on that and went through that process. After that, obviously, it was time to look at issuing a job offer based on those interviews. And at the time, I felt like it was just not the right fit for the city and the organization at that particular time. We had qualified candidates, but just really was not comfortable going forward. And so, at that time, I thought we've got two vacancies here. And so, at that time, I thought we've got two vacancies here, and needed to step back and look at the organization, think about it, and see what was the best opportunity that we could have to fill these positions in a major way and do some major restructuring in the executive team staff. So, at that point, I spent about three weeks going around and visiting with each department director, both the fire chief and the police chief, and we had personal meetings with each one of those staffs. And I can tell you that that's probably been one of the most productive things that I've done since I've been your city manager, is to, to have that kind of conversation with the people that we have on staff in those levels. And I wanted to talk to them about, and get their views on the organization, where we'd been, where we were trying to go, some of their aspirations personally and professionally, what they felt like they wanted to pursue in their careers. And so, after that, I thought we have a great opportunity to not only fill these positions, but to fill these positions with people we currently have on staff, and fill them, not just to fill them, but to really have people in place and to manage according to what I would consider their strengths as managers. And so, tonight, I am proposing three appointments for you to consider tonight. The first one would be the assistant city manager position, and I'm pleased to put forth the name of Keith Bonds to you to be appointed as the assistant city manager. Keith has been, and also, let me, excuse me, let me go back. The other two tonight will be Roland McPhee for public works director and also director of administration, Mary Ann Miller. Okay. Keith Bonds.
Is that a selfie?
Do you like that picture?
That looks like a selfie, man.
We have a low, we have a low budget on photography.
Yeah, I see that. Well, the one, yeah, that, okay, go ahead, let's leave that up there.
Everyone knows Keith Bonds, but Keith has a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Texas A&amp;M. He's a registered professional engineer in the state of Texas, and 25 years or so of municipal experience. He's been with the city of Longview since 1999. He came in as a civil engineer. He's been the interim water planning development director, and then in 2000, was named the director of water utilities. And then in 2002, I believe those were combined all under Public Works. And so, Keith, since I've been here, and I tell everyone that I talk to about Keith, that he is one of the most capable directors that I've ever worked with in my municipal career. He, his strong suit, in my opinion, is operations. Obviously, being an engineer, he's, he's familiar with processes and how you get from point A to point B in construction projects and, and other projects that he's been involved in. But to me, the thing I think that sets Keith apart is that he also has the ability to communicate how he wants people and manages people to get from point A to point B, which I think is a very important quality for an assistant city manager at that level. He has been over, he would be over development services, he'd be over community services, and he'd also obviously be over public works. And I think this is the beauty of this organizational plan, because these three departments that be reporting to Keith are heavy in operations. All those departments, whether it be, you know, in the, obviously in the public works, but in the parks department, and also in development services are, are departments that have a lot of processes, and then they have a lot of organizational and type aspects that, that I think really plays to Keith's strong suit. Keith has the, the respect of all city employees. He has the respect of the community, is well-known in the community. And the thing that, that I think is the most important thing for an assistant city manager is that you have someone in there that city council, the community, and obviously the city manager has the confidence in and the capabilities to step right in, if need be, to be the city manager. If the city manager's incapacitated or whatever, then you've got a man in Keith Bonds that could step right in, and the city would never miss a beat. So, I'm proud tonight, you know, to present Keith's name to you for the assistant city manager job. The next person that I'd like to recommend is Roland McPhee to be the director of public works. Now, Roland has been here also since 2000, so 14 years. He came to us, I think, from Marshall. Is that right, Roland? And he was the public works engineering director for the city of Marshall. And since 2009, he was promoted to the assistant director of public works position and has been in there. Roland is very capable as well. Now, Roland may not be as visible to a lot of people, but I can tell you, all the Bond projects that the council and the voters have put forward, all the construction projects that, that we've been doing over the years in both public works and water and sewer department, has Roland McPhee's handprints all over it. He's very good at managing construction projects, and all of you, I think, understand that, I don't know of any projects really the city's had that have been over budget or not on time. And that has a great deal to do with Roland's capabilities and how he manages those type of projects. He's very capable to step right in, into Keith's seat as the director of public works. And of course, in that, is that those are big departments and a big job, and also we'll have Keith there as well to help out when he needs to in the oversight of those departments. These are the departments or the divisions that Roland will be responsible for, water supply, collection, distribution, traffic engineering, sanitation and fleet, wastewater, streets and drainage, and then plant automation. So, Roland will, I have every confidence in Keith, and I have visited about it, and Keith has every confidence in Roland's capabilities as well, and I think it'll be a perfect fit for him. Next, I'd like to recommend Mary Ann Miller to be the-
Why does her picture seem much better than the other two?
You'll have to ask her that.
You think?
She's better looking than we are.
Well, at least you're honest.
Mary Ann Miller is, has a bachelor of administration degree in broadcast journalism from Union University in Tennessee, and she currently is completing her coursework in her master's of public administration from UT Tyler. She came to the city in 2001, 13 years ago, as a library tech, and then spent two years in the human resources department as administrative secretary. And then in 2003, Mr. Finley hired her to move into the city attorney's office, and then in 2008, moved down the hall and became the city manager office, office manager. And then since 2009, she's been in the city manager's office as the assistant to the city manager. I can say, having worked with Mary Ann really since, because we work so closely with the city attorney's office, really since I came here in '07, but then in '09, we've worked together pretty much every day on projects since '09. Her strong suits are administration and organization. I've never been around anybody that understands how to organize things and prioritize things to accomplish a goal. She can take issues and projects, research those, and has the ability to have goals and to be organized enough to meet those where you can get from point A to point B, and to find solutions for whatever issue that, that we're looking at. She's had a lot of experience, of course, in the city attorney's office, and experienced with policy, with ordinances, with personnel policies, with administrative regulations, and those type of things, which have been very important in the office of administration. And one change, of course, this would eliminate a director of human resources and be replaced with a director of administration. And of course, she would be responsible for other things just than human resources and risk. She'd also be responsible for information services, all of our IT functions. She'd be responsible for municipal court operations, and also for the internal auditor as well. Now, I'd like, those are the three names that I have before you, but I'd like to take just a minute to complete the plan that, that I would like to, to go ahead and pursue. As I said, we're going to have a director of administration, hopefully would be the plan, and would like to have the HR and risk functions under a manager instead of a director level. So, the manager would, of risk and HR would report to the director of administration. And I'd like to put forth, Terry Fields for that position would be my intentions. Terry currently is the risk manager, who oversees all of our risk and insurance and health clinics. She's been with the city since 2001, and I'd like to combine the other, the HR side under the management of Terry Fields. Terry, I want to brag on her because she, the employee health clinic that we have and operate, is one of the most successful things we've done since I've been here as city manager, and you're all familiar with the employee health clinic and the benefit and the services that provides to our employees. And we are seeing definite signs of cost savings as we go forward because of that. And Terry Fields was the architect that brought that program forward back, I think, in, I don't know, '08, somewhere in there, to go forward, and she has done a wonderful job doing that, and I expect she'll do exactly the same over on the HR side as well. Okay? And then, of course, this would be the organization chart, assuming all that works out. Terry would be the manager of risk. She'd also have HR risk, employee health clinic, and payroll. And last, but certainly not least, I would propose to promote Sean Hara to the vacancy created, to the assistant to the city manager. And everyone knows Sean, I, you know, I'll probably embarrass him, but I don't know anybody that does not like Sean Hara. He's just been all over the city and does a wonderful job as our PIO officer and all the volunteer boards and all the things he's coordinated over the years. Sean has, look at this, two bachelor's degrees from Luton University, one in business administration, one in political science, and then a master's of public administration from UT Tyler. He's been with the city since 2003, and has, of course, since 2012, been our PIO officer. I would propose for him to continue being the PIO officer. I think that makes perfect sense with his duties, and he would be responsible for the overall media development, that's the Channel 5, the website, and all the social media that we do, and then also help coordinate the city manager's office staff. Sean and Mary Ann both have done excellent jobs helping out behind the scenes on the comprehensive plan committee. I know Mr. Manley's been involved in many meetings with them and the mayor on that committee, and the support they've given on that as we go forward. They've done a wonderful job trying to get all that done and, and going forward. So, both of them would continue to do projects like that to help out. So, to summarize this, I think this organizes our structure according to primary areas of administration and operations. It allows longtime qualified employees to promote. It positions these employees according to their managerial strengths. It doesn't just fill positions, but it, it has a purpose according to what I would believe would be their strengths. We do this with less one executive level position. We would propose not to fill Roland's position as an assistant director, and these and other savings, we're going to be able to do this and show savings to our budget of around $126,000. So, tonight, I'd ask you to, to approve these three positions. Keith Bonds for assistant city manager, Roland McPhee for director of public works, and Mary Ann Miller as director of administration. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let me, let me ask you this, as far as the questions and everything else. You more comfortable down there? You want to come back to your place?
Wherever you want me, Mayor.
Come on and come back to your place, I would think. Let me make a couple of comments while David's returning. You know, this, like counsel knows, has been going, this has been ongoing now for quite some time. This was not the original structure. After, you know, a lot of work by Mr. Willard and, you know, trying to really make, make the thing work the right way, this is the outcome. There's a number of things to this, but, but one thing I want to mention to counsel is that a number of years ago, when Ricky Childers was our city manager, there was a motion, there was an item on an agenda once, to take away where counsel has to approve directors. If you check, most cities, the, the director positions are appointed by the city manager. I mean, it's kind of like coaching, when, you know, you, you replace the coach. Typically, the coach's assistants don't really stay with the team, or he, he has that opportunity to evaluate whether they, they fit his team or don't. And, you know, that's, that's, it's unusual, okay, that, that we have that situation, but that's, that's, you know, something that we've done for quite some time, and, and so I want to point that out. We, we are a little bit different in that the city manager comes to counsel when it comes to directors. Personally, I think anytime in, like in, in business, that you're able to promote within, if you have employees that have earned the opportunity to move ahead, move forward, to grow in their job and to help your company, I think it makes sense. And I think it makes sense, in this case, that the individuals that are being promoted, you know, it does make good sense. I, I think, you know, these are long-term employees. What, what are they looking forward to, you know, down the road? What is every employee looking forward to down the road? And hopefully, it's to grow. The city has to have a team behind it, you know, to do great things, and, and we need to foster that type of attitude within the ranks of our city employees that, you know, don't think that you're going to be in that same position your whole career, and, and step forward and show some prominence, step forward and show some, you know, some acumen to, to move up the ladder, okay? And, and it's important. The fact that there's considerable savings to our budget, on top of with, in the case of Mr. Bonds, where there's maybe some streamlining of the processes. We know there's processes in this city that have been there for quite some time. And it's time to review those very closely and, and make sure that we're executing in a high-efficiency way to make sure that, that the services we're providing to the citizens of Longview are, are absolutely where they need to be, and even better. So, that, that excites me that there's the potential to streamline processes and put new things into place. So, I'm going to open it up for questions that, anybody have any? Okay, we'll start on, on number six.
Okay, all right.
Since you were late.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'm kidding with you.
Yes, right. First of all, Mr. Willard, I want to say thank you. It's really an excellent organization and an excellent opportunity that you, that you have people within the city of Longview organization that you can promote. I know you interviewed other people for these jobs, and it's just, it's just excellent that you can find people within the organization to fill these positions. I think my, I'm going to make two points. One is the boost to morale and the personal performance in the city staff. It's, it's just always easier when you can work with somebody that you've known, that, that you know what they do. And, and that's just, that's, that's a good way to do it. On a little lighter side, I was talking to Roland McPhee the other day, and he told me, next time he gets a haircut, he's going to make me a toupee, so I might look like Mr. Manley.
Boy, you deserve that. He's, he's getting everybody on this.
Well, he won't let me have it.
Are, are you done?
Yes.
I'll come over to this side, okay? Then we'll-
I don't know how to follow that.
Yeah. That's why I was going to try to see if Mr. Simmons wanted to.
He said no.
Well, first thing, I just want to point out, once again, there's way too many Aggies in our leadership at the city.
They are in SCC conference.
That's right, I know. I had to write my kids back into the will after they went to A&amp;M, keep back in the conference. Got a lot of confidence in all you, all you folks who are getting promoted. Congratulations. You've worked hard, and you exemplify the kind of character and professionalism that we want to have at our city, as you not only work with our citizens, but as you travel around the state and interact with other folks. So, real proud of all of you, and I, being as the liaison to development services, I've spent some time with Mr. Bonds and asked him to put some extra effort into that area as I continue to hear comments from some of my fellow citizens about how we could make, improve that department. And I know you share my passion for that, and I'll do everything I can to help you, not only with that department, but anything else you're doing. So, congratulations to everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Willard. Okay, Ms. Williams. I'm going to come back to you. Okay, Ms. Williams, I'll come back to you.
While I appreciate the effort, we've been talking about this for some time, I have to acknowledge publicly that I'm a little disappointed in the way the process has played out in this case. I realize that the City Manager has the right to appoint a team, but at the same time, I also realize that we are a public entity and not a private corporation. We're an entity that functions off of public taxpayer dollars, and I think that we are, we should be cautious in governing ourselves as such. I was expecting a larger and more diverse, and I will leave you to your definitions of diversity, restructuring process. I do believe in growing your own and creating your own, but we cannot afford to be selective in that process. I was very excited at the thought of when we did not hire from within an HR Director, someone from the outside, because sometimes I believe that we need to shake up some things in order to promote and be advocates for real change. Not anything that's going to be offensive, but change that continues to promote our community as we move forward that's indicative of all the people that live in our community. So I don't think that this really falls in line with some of the things we've been discussing along the lines of the Unity and Diversity Committee and the City Manager's Diversity Council. I do believe hard work should be rewarded, but at the same time, I'm looking at the savings of $126,000. I believe in being fiscally conservative to some degree. However, you have to weigh your risks versus your benefit, and we invest in the things that we want to see take place. And so tonight, I need to acknowledge publicly so that there are no questions and no stones unturned, that I will be voting against this, because I expected something larger. I expected something that would do a better job to level the playing field. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to, you know, comment about, you know, the diversity in that particular conversation, and, you know, it should come down to, you know, people's abilities and the fact that they've been trained in the type of job they do, and to me, that should always weigh out when you're evaluating and assessing talent and employees is not, you know, it's nothing more than their performance, and we should, you know, close our eyes to anything else. It's what are they capable of? What's their performance tell me? What's, you know, I have data and records of their success, and my eyes closed, and I think about who makes this a better organization, and nothing more, nothing else. So, Mr. Frost.
I too want to congratulate you three. I'm ending up my nine years, and down through those nine years, y'all helped me greatly, and I've appreciated it very much. You've done a great job, and I congratulate you on your promotion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had wrote up a little something that I was going to read, Mr. Mayor, that I wrote up. Mr. Finley, I got two minutes, right?
He said you wanted one minute.
Okay, but I want to go ahead, and I kind of did this a couple of days ago, and over the past week, you have undoubtedly read about transition and changes in the City of Longview. While change is often unsettling, I want to reassure the community that we are continuing to move forward in a positive fashion with a goal of providing excellent service in a manner that is respected of the city, because Longview is one of the best cities in this area. Over the past two years, we have enjoyed many successes in the area of economic development with new companies coming to Longview and existing companies expanding. We have added quality-of-life projects such as walking and mountain bike trails and a dog park. This council has approved additional faculties, including a fire training center and many assisted living centers. We have maintained a balanced budget, obtained a double-A bond rating, and just recently received a ISO insurance rating. This will in turn assist reducing insurance rates for residents and businesses. These successes were the result of hard work from everyone in the City Manager's Office on down. We on the council set the policy and the strategic goals. Our staff provides the implementation to accomplish these goals. This reorganization is just the first step with additional steps to follow, building a foundation for growth. I trust the decision we make tonight is in the best interest of the residents of the City of Longview. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good job, Gary. Good job. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Moved to.
Have a motion. Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, congratulations to you guys. Okay, we have, and congratulations to you, Mr. Willard.
Thank you, sir.
Election item, consider an ordinance canceling the general election. That's music to a candidate's ears. Homicide Ishihara. But consider an ordinance canceling the general election to fill the expired term for City Council District Four. Ms. Shelley.
Good evening.
Hello there.
We're requesting an ordinance canceling the election to fill the expired term for Councilmember District Four and declaring elected to office the unopposed candidate, Kristen Ishihara, for a term expiring in May of 2017. Mrs. Ishihara will be sworn into, sworn in after presenting the canvas of the District Three Councilmember election on May 15, 2014, at a special election.
Okay, questions?
Special called session, excuse me.
No.
You scared them all off.
Yeah. Okay, so we don't have to actually, we do have to have, okay, so may I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, a second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. That's all of our business tonight, council, but we do have citizens, oh, excuse me, items of community interest.
I'd like to start out by asking Christian to stand up, stand up and let all the citizens see her.
All right.
I only have one more year left to work with her, and I know it's going to be a great time because she's as, she's behind the animal shelter as much as I am, so I've got another vote on the council now.
Man, you adding it up, aren't you, buddy?
Yep.
Gary?
First, I want to say congratulations to Johnny Cases on their 65th anniversary. You didn't have that one, did you, Ms. Mayor?
I was saying.
Oh, okay.
Got some of those good arches?
You know, because the average business cycle is probably 40 years, so they really surpassed that mark, so congratulations to the folks over at Johnny Cases. The second thing I got, Mr. Mayor, I got some very exciting happening in the southwestern district in Longview, and I went over to the text out and I talked to Bill, and I want to see a conceptual view of what the loop to, the southwestern loop, I mean, the bridge is going to look like going over that railroad track.
Sabine Street Bridge.
Over Sabine Street, and they're going to have a, this, this is where your business is, Mr. Allen. They're going to have, you was asking about, they're going to have a loop around that goes underneath that bridge and goes back to the south side of the area. But it's a very good design, and the completion date is going to be in 2016.
Really?
2016, but it's a good design, and instead of, you're going to have to go over the bridge now, so it's going to be real right now. I'm going to be at the Boys and Girls Club on March 19, and I'm going to be talking about how city government works, and I'm going to have somebody from the Fire Department to talk about the Fire Explorer Program.
Good. Good deal. Okay, Ms. Casher?
I actually don't know that I have ended today, believe it or not. We just got back, I would like to say we just got back from a great Texas Eagle Marketing and Performance Organization meeting in San Antonio, Texas. I gave a presentation on behalf of the City of Longview. For those of you who don't know, that is Texas Eagle, our rail. Want to encourage everyone to go ahead and mark your calendars, and yes, it is Election Day, but it's May the 10th. We have told them, on behalf of the mayor and council, that we are going to roll out the red carpet for the members of Tempo and all of their efforts for many, many years. So want to encourage people to please come and participate in that, and I think that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and thank you for the good job you've been doing with, you know, the whole rail program and with Tempo, and I think it's going to be really neat to have them here on the 10th. Okay, Mr. Frost.
Oh, let's see, this weekend, we start the basketball tournament, 14 and under in several groups, 150 different teams and things. They're going to start having opening tomorrow night, so they'll be here playing over the weekend.
Okay. Did you want to mention it? Is also going to mention it?
Mayor mentioned it.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, okay. The Community Health Corps, well, let me, I want to do something first before, I have two things I want to say. I want to speak in support of the intent behind Councilwoman Williams' negative vote tonight. We need more black faces, we need more minorities, we need more women within our organization, and I want to encourage everyone who might see this meeting, or see the recording of this meeting, or read about it if the paper repeats it, that as Ms. Willis once said, the City of Longview is open for business, and we welcome anyone here, and want to encourage anyone who might have an interest to become a Keith Bonds, or to become a Martell Armstrong, or a Laura Hill, to apply to become part of our team, because our Longview city staff is really a great place to work. And I look forward to the day we don't have to worry about whether or not we have a problem that, as she expressed it tonight, and that I agree with, because we do have the kind of folks that want to work here and come from all walks of life, so I want to encourage anyone to do that. Secondly, I started volunteering about a year ago for, within the Community Health Corps Organization, which most folks go, who's that? You tell them it's the Old Sabine Valley, and people go, oh, yeah, that's right. So, but Community Health Corps is so much more than just alcohol and drug rehab, and one of my passions is homeless vets. I'm a Marine, and they have a wonderful program and are working hard to help homeless vets in East Texas. To that end, they're having a fundraising dinner on Saturday night. They've sold about 180 tickets, they have room for about another 20 or 25 people. I'd like to encourage you to come out and attend it. It begins at 6 o'clock, there's a dinner at 6:00, there's some performances. I've always enjoyed this for the folks who are actually in the program that all think they're Eminem, you know, and they like to come out and sing, and, but they have a lot of excitement in the way they perform. And then, most importantly to me, is there's a Marine Lieutenant Colonel retired that's going to be speaking, who served in Iraq and has a special passion also for veterans returning back home and dealing with post-traumatic stress syndrome, and how, because so many of our veterans have ended up as homeless in our community. So it's a great story that he has. He travels all over the country, speaking on behalf of veterans, and again, Community Health Corps is a great asset to our city. I'd like to encourage people to come out and support that, and buy a ticket and come join us on Saturday night. Thank you. Okay, thanks for, Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to encourage everybody at this time, go outside, take advantage of our wonderful Longview Parks and walking trails. Ms. Hill sitting over there with a big smile has done an excellent job. We really have a wonderful place to live. Don't stay in the house, go outside and enjoy East Texas. Thank you.
Okay. Longview Parks and Recreation will host 150 youth basketball teams from across Texas during the TAAF Youth Basketball State Tournament. Teams will compete at basketball gyms throughout Longview community on Friday, March 14, and Saturday, March 15. We want to thank LISD, Pine Tree School District, Laterno University, St. Mary's Catholic Church, Longview Christian School, and The Rock at First Baptist Church. Congratulations, Keep Longview Beautiful, Ms. Drogey. They received Keep America Beautiful President Circle Award during Keep America Beautiful's 2014 National Conference, which recently took place in Charlotte, North Carolina. The President Circle's Award recognizes exemplary performance made by certified affiliates of the national nonprofit in building and sustaining a vibrant community. Longview Transit is celebrating 11 years of transportation service to the community. Talked about Ms. Willis earlier, and that was her baby, so to speak. So Celebrate Longview Transit is partnering with Leadership Longview to conduct a book drive benefiting the Boys and Girls Club of Gregg County. On Monday, March 17, Longview Transit riders who present a new or gently-used children's or young adult book will be allowed to ride free. For more information, call 903-753-2287. And finally, Getting Ahead in a Just Getting By World. Getting Ahead in a Just Getting By World. Class will begin Tuesday, March 18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The 18-week class will be offered through Partners in Prevention. Classes offer insight on creating financial goals, budgeting, untapped resources, and the hidden rules of the lower, middle, and upper classes. The class will meet on Tuesdays with childcare meal and workbook provided. There's no fees for the class. Please call 903-237-1019 for additional information.
At 8:30 a.m. tomorrow morning at the Longview Train Station, there will be, I think it's a ribbon cutting, is that correct? A banner, a banner when the train goes through at 8:30. It's the Texas Eagle. Thank you, Richard. 8:30, oh.
When the train gets there.
So it could be 8:15, it could be 10:15.
Okay, all righty. Council meeting is adjourned.